The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Chaplain Don Kappoff of the Orange County Sheriff's Department Coroner Division.
And after the invocation Kathy Ward will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you pray with me? Father, as we acknowledge you here this evening, we're thankful for our lives, we're thankful for being able to live in San Clemente and call it home. We're thankful for all the blessings that you give us as residents of San Clemente. We ask that you would watch over our families, that you'd keep them safe and healthy. For our children, that they would make good decisions when they're away from the home, that you would protect them, watch over them. For these proceedings tonight, Father, I ask that you would be here and the decisions that are made would benefit the City of San Clemente. And last, Father, I ask that you would give a special blessing over my friend Jim Holloway for his service at the city and his wife Pat as an enterant to retirement. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please permit standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Doncheck.
President.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baker.
Here.
Mayor Hamm.
Here.
The first item this evening is the presentation of a commendation to Community Development Director Jim Holloway in recognition of 28 years of service as the city's Community Development Director.
I'm going to let you take this. Before I start looking this over, if you want to say a couple words, I'd really appreciate it.
Check, check, check. Check, check, check. Can you hear me? No?
I think that last one did.
So is it Tom?
Okay, there we go.
You go first or me?
No, I want you to talk. This is really important. You have to say it more.
I want to see what it says.
The first thing I noticed here, Jim, is that it says that you were the Community Development Director when you got hired here.
Yeah, that's true.
You just reached your goal day one. You were the Community Development Director day one and you just stayed that for...
Well, it says here it's a condemnation. Is that an auto-check?
This is great. No, Jim, there's a lot of whereabouts in here that I can talk about, but 28 years to the citizens of San Clemente. I'm sure you've seen many great projects come and go and you've left your mark on all of them and we just truly appreciate what you've done for this community and how much of your time and your heart you've put into it. And I'm sure there's a lot more we're going to be seeing of you at the pool and around town. Not at City Hall, but in all the good places. So I just want to be the first one to thank you and congratulate you on your retirement ceremony.
Thank you.
You've got to speak to your entire career as much as you want it, but we went ahead and...
Excellent idea. I've had more than my share of time here, so I'm going to keep it short here. But I have, I've worked on, I've had the pleasure of working on a lot of really big and small projects and medium-sized projects. I have worked with literally scores of people. And so the problem is, where do you start and where do you stop? And, you know, don't worry crowd, I'm going to stop now. But because of that, I'm just going to say thank you. I appreciate the recognition that you're giving me tonight. And I would say from the heart that it's been a real privilege to be here during this era of growth and development in San Clemente. And I think we've done a really good job over the last several decades and I'm thankful for that opportunity. So that's it. Thank you very much.
This is Jim's better half here. We should give her a round of applause as well. Got it? Perfect. We'll see you at the Red Fox. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation.
And next is presentation of a commendation to Records Management Coordinator Rita Mueller in recognition of 27 years of exemplary service to the city.
Oh, she has it right in front. Perfect. So I don't know if you guys noticed, but there's a bunch of whereabouts on all these things and I don't like reading the whereabouts because they just don't make any sense to me. But one of the things I like to do is just, you know, speaking off the cuff and...
From your heart.
From my heart, exactly. And one of the things that popped out on this is the first whereabouts, which is when you got hired here, you were the switchboard operator.
Right.
Did you actually have a switchboard? Were you... This is City Hall, is this switching over or is that just a holdover from 19...
No, no, no. The thing is great.
Oh, okay, good, good. I just wanted to make sure.
Make sure that they...
Yeah. So 27 years of service here at City Hall and a lot of those I'm sure were with Jim and with Joanne sitting in the front office. And if you guys haven't seen this lady before, then you've never been to City Hall because she's one of the first people you see when you walk in the door. And she always has a smile on her face and she's always happy to see everybody who walks in the door, even when she's probably not very happy to see you. She puts on a good smile anyway and does a fantastic job. So Rita, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. And I think the words of Bob were, we're not going to give her this, right? Because she can't actually retire, is that what?
That retirement was disapproved. We've got to run that through channels one more time. Okay.
So congratulations, Rita.
Thank you, thank you. Rita, point the plaque out. Oh, yes. Do it again.
When's your official last date?
The 29th.
29th, okay, perfect. And then we'll see you back again on February 1st, right?
No. I'll come back to visit, but I'll be on the other side of the counter.
Would you mind saying that?
Thank you very much for these kind words. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. City Council Jeff, Laura, Joanne, the years have just flown by and I understand that there's a lot of things to do outside of City Hall and I'm looking forward to my new chapter. But I will be back to visit, like I said, on the other side of the counter. So thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Rita, I've got one question though. Will your husband still be making baked goods in the morning for us? I want to... That's the guy that gets the rest of the men in trouble right there.
I want to introduce my husband Jerry and I hope he'll keep up all those wonderful dinners that you've prepared for me.
You see, I'm really the caretaker.
But also Jerry supplies our department and the rest of the staff with wonderful pastries. So I'm afraid the rooms are going to go bye-bye.
Well, not necessarily because, don't forget, I do a little work for the city as a contractor. Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks a lot for this, Jerry.
Next is a presentation by San Clemente High School students McKenna Brownell and Danielle Clevert concerning campus activities.
It's just me today. Danielle is actually at rehearsal for the new play, so I'll present. I know. I'm here solo, but no worries. Okay, so let's talk about January at San Clemente High School. Do I press it? Oh, yeah, I do. Danielle always does this. Oh, there we go. So winter sports are going on right now. They're all kind of in their beginning stages right now. We have league for boys soccer, girls soccer, boys basketball. Boys soccer's 4-0 in league and girls soccer is actually playing a game right now at San Clemente. We'll see how they do. Dance team is always one of our best sports. They just competed at a competition and they took home four first places and three second places, which was quite impressive. We also have our environmental club going on and the environmental class cleaned up over 450 pounds of trash, which is the greatest amount of trash that they've ever collected in the past 12 years. They also had a record-breaking 41 students show up and some of them weren't even from the environmental class, they just wanted to come and pick up trash to better the community. Recently, the district delivered Google Chromebooks to our school and these were given to some 20 classrooms in order to prepare for new testing that will be happening in the spring. And these students are able to use these books for educational purposes sometimes and also for the new testing that they're going to try out in the spring. It's interesting and kind of neat. Let's see. Battle of the Classes is also an event that ASB is putting on and it's one of our most successful because it's a battle between each class, ninth freshman versus seniors, sophomores versus juniors. Recently, we kicked it off at our Winter Sports Assembly and pairs from each class had to try to pop a giant balloon in any ways they saw necessary. Some laid on the ground and tried to jump on top of each other, some ran into each other. It was really fun and neat and seniors are in the lead with juniors right behind. And coming up, we have finals next week, which are always stressful, but good to have a new semester on the horizon. And we have our winter formal that Friday when there's no school and our theme is a night at the Oscars. And that's it?
I better schedule my manicure for another day.
Yeah, I don't think I mentioned that, but yeah, it'll be packed, so no going there. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is a presentation by John Heffernan and Kristin Camulilla, I believe, concerning the inaugural South Orange County Economic Report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, staff and residents. I'm John Heffernan, Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T, but I'm here tonight in my role as a director for the Board of the South Orange County Economic Coalition. And with me...
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Kristin Camulilla, Government Affairs Manager for Cox Communications, but also here in the capacity as a Board of Directors member for the South Orange County Economic Coalition.
Well, thanks for the opportunity. We wanted to update you on what the South Orange County Economic Coalition has been up to for the last couple of years. We changed our name a few years back from the South Orange County Regional Chambers of Commerce, now known as the South Orange County Economic Coalition. It's a more accurate reflection of who we are and what we're doing in the region. Want to bring you up to date on some of the upcoming events and also how we can be a resource to the city and to the community here in San Clemente. First of all, we're regional in scope. We focus on South Orange County and our members include key stakeholder companies committed to a strong local, regional business climate. The leadership on the Corporate Board of Directors comprises influential regional community stakeholders and business leaders. Our mission is to be instrumental in building and supporting a strong regional economy through leadership, advocacy, education, and representation. So simply, our goal is to promote regional business interests by facilitating awareness and cooperation among the businesses, governments, and other stakeholders. What sets us apart from the valuable work that the local chambers do is our regional focus. We have a broader reach. Our aim is to be the voice for regional business interests on important policy issues and key initiatives, as well as projects that affect all of our communities. Because we serve the businesses that are our constituents and your constituents, we feel like we're a valuable resource to the city, to your staff, and to the community. In the broadest sense, we're going to support and be out there speaking on regional initiatives that further infrastructure, workforce development, and mobility or transportation.
For example, the Coalition has actively supported and advocated for numerous projects such as the 241 toll road completion, SDG&E's South Orange County Reliability Enhancement Project, as well as the Cadiz Water Project, just to name just a couple. We're engaged partners with Saddleback College and UC Irvine in bringing together regional business interests with our regional education partners. We provide the region with a variety of advocacy and engagement tools, from legislative tracking, to a robust advocacy network, to a monthly speakers forum, which is open to the public, very well attended, and features important guests with, in mind our regional focus. So we certainly invite all of you to attend those meetings. They're held the sec, and everybody in the audience, I'm open to the public, second to last Friday of the month at 7:30 a.m. at Ocar offices. You might also recall that this past election cycle, we conducted a series of candidate forums and held a post-election recap and analysis, both of which were very well received by voters and candidates alike. In addition, we have two very exciting upcoming events that we'd like to share more information with you about and certainly encourage your participation as a council as well as city staff coming up. The first is actually this coming up, coming up this Friday. So if it's not on your calendars, please mark that. We hope to see you all there. It's our Libations with Legislators event, January 23rd, 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at Saddleback Memorial Hospital in their conference facilities. It's a free event, open to the public, and the goal is to provide an opportunity for our newly-elected South Orange County federal, state, and local elected officials to get together with their constituents. We look forward to providing an evening of networking and conversation. The next event is coming up in the end of February. It's our inaugural, first of its kind, South Orange County Economic Report. This is being conducted in partnership with Saddleback College and it's a unique report. It's a data and market analysis that focuses specifically on South Orange County cities and planned communities, which contribute, you might not know this, over $25.6 billion to the broader Orange County economy. This report looks at regional, the regional economy, including the indicators that contribute to the current and future growth of South Orange County specifically. Community information is provided as a comparison of each city's contribution to the Orange County economy. The luncheon will be on February 27th, a Friday, at Saddleback College from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. and attendees will receive a bound copy of the report. Hopefully, one that, you know, every year they'll continue to have as a reference in each of your bookcases. Featured speakers will be Todd Burnett, President of Saddleback College, Anthony Tang, Interim Dean of Business, Science, and Economics at Saddleback College, as well as Dwayne Cave, our Chairman of the South Orange County Economic Coalition. We're encouraging all cities to certainly attend. You can sponsor a table in which your city would be featured in promotions, as well as receive a table of 10. And that's really it for that. We do hope to see you all there. So just in closing, we want to say that, you know, while each city within South Orange County certainly is unique and has its own personality, we're all in it together. No matter where we live, work, or play, we're part of a very strong, vital, and growing region. The Economic Coalition has stepped up to be advocates and supporters of business regionally in the city halls across the area and in Sacramento. So we just thank you for the opportunity to just present who we are today and with that, we open it up to any questions you might have.
I have a question about the South Orange County Economic Report. Is this going to break down then, say, City of San Clemente and the, and what our contribution is to that amount as well?
Yes, it will. It will take every single city individually and produce kind of what the big drivers are in each city.
Okay. And then forecasting as well future growth based on just development plans or what is that, just demographics?
It's going to be looking at past trends as well as future projections based on what's in the works. They're actually working with a number of consultants. In addition to the college, they're working with a number of consultants that do economic reports for like OCBC, for example, but they've pared down the data and they've looked just specifically at South Orange County.
I had a related question. Typically Chapman and Fullerton do economic forecasts for the region. Is this study designed to be kind of a baby version of that or...
Not baby. I wouldn't say baby. It's pared down. It's only inclusive of cities south of the Y. So when we look at what the major drivers are in industry, you know, it's very surprising and the goal of it is to be an eye-opener to the rest of the county in terms of what value South Orange County really brings. For example, we have a huge manufacturing industry as a major economic driver that most people probably aren't aware of. So it's really to highlight what we as South County bring to the broader Orange County region.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
And next is presentation of certificates of recognition to Marine Safety Officer Anderson, Marine Safety Officer Burton, and Marine Safety Chief Humphreys.
First off, we don't give awards to people that do their jobs, so why are we giving you guys an award? Nah, I'm just kidding. One of the things I want to highlight about this and why we do things like this, I'm just giving these guys a hard time, is that, you know, when people think about lifeguard jobs, they think of suntans, ocean, warm water, warm days, and they don't realize the job that these guys do on a daily basis. And a lot of people forget that our lifeguards are out there 365, 12 hours a day, but if called upon, they're 24 hours a day as well. And they think that when the winter time comes, they just close their doors and they shut down shop and they go home for the winter, but they don't. They factor they're every day, making sure everybody's safe in the community. We have a lot of surfers and swimmers and people that visit this community during the winter that think our winter months are actually warm compared to where they're from. So these guys had the opportunity to effect a rescue just last month.
About a month ago.
About a month ago. And I want to ask Blake here, what was the first thought that went through your mind when you looked over your shoulder and Chief Humphreys was the one that was assisting you in the rescue? Because that had to be quite a shock, right?
I was pretty excited to see him.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was good. The help was welcomed.
And Chief, when was the last time you actually got in the water and affected a rescue?
Well, it's been a while and I hope it's a little while longer.
Yeah, exactly. So this, this whereabouts here tells the story of exactly what went down, but I don't think you want to hear it from me. You probably want to hear it from these guys. So Blake, if you could just step up to the mic and talk about that day briefly and let us know what happened.
Well, I was in Marine Safety Headquarters just north of San Clemente Pier, talking to Ian Burton. I was about to go out for a patrol when him and I, we both saw the same thing at the same time. We saw a pretty large, larger person dressed in all black, starting to make a beeline for the water. That day it was, it was high tide, so as soon as you hit the water, there's a deep inshore hole. And it definitely did not seem like, it wasn't, it wasn't a regular thing to happen that day.
Was that Bob Baker you're talking about? Were you wearing black spandex that day at the afternoon? Okay.
We definitely had reason to be a little bit concerned about the situation, so we both made a couple comments and the woman walked directly in the ocean, submerged herself and I didn't wait much longer. I told Ian I was, I was going to respond. By the time I got there, she'd been underwater for about 20, 30 seconds, made no attempt to try and to bring herself out of the water. I was able to pull her with her arms. I pulled her back up on the beach. We had the surf was kind of crashing on me and her and here comes Chief Humphreys coming down as he waves to Ian up in zero. Ian was able to call 911 and have medics and sheriffs also respond down. So by the time we got her up on the beach, we didn't know if she was breathing or not, if she was conscious. First thing we wanted to do was make sure we got a clear airway. She was breathing. She opened up her eyes and that was about it. So some bystanders also helped us bring her up. She was pretty heavy.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. And hopefully these plaques will serve as a smaller reminder of what you guys do for us every day. Chief, that one's for you. You know, Blake made a comment there about, he made a couple comments. I'm sure one of the things that's great about having professional lifeguard service in our city is that these guys train all the time and that's something they don't need to discuss, is when they see something, they take action and they, they keep everybody safe. So thank you guys very much.
Thanks.
Thanks for taking photo. Are there any PSAs you guys want to drop over here? Nothing? Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. We have a lot.
Great. I don't know if you guys noticed, but those three lifeguards were sweating. That's because that's the most clothes they've had on, I think, in about 10 years. It wasn't because they were nervous in front of us.
Pretty sure they're going to walk outside and they're going to take off all their clothes.
Yeah, exactly.
It's very uncomfortable.
No, the water's freezing.
Them and Bill Cameron.
It's crazy. Crazy, the water temperatures that they have to deal with, so. Any comments, Blake?
One guy with a good nose, sir.
Yeah, oh, okay. Thanks, guys. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, oral communication. So we have a big stack of cards this evening and I think we're limited to 30 minutes, so we'll do our best to get through all of them. The first person is Mr. Lefrono. Followed by Mr. Lefrono will be Jonathan Volski and following him will be Lin Jung. If you could just line up along here, that'd be great and smooth the transition.
Well, it's a State of the Union address tonight and I choose to be here. Some people can watch politics, some people can participate. I choose to do both. I'm glad everyone is here tonight, becoming engaged in the process. And I'm just going to ask all of you to...
Mr. Lefrono, will you please address the City Council?
So I'm glad to see everybody's here, you know, with the hospital and everything. I'm really happy about that. It's quite conceivable that in two years, we're going to have 50 homeless beds and 78 fewer hospital beds. There's some bad logic going on there, which brings me to the reason I'm here and that is the homeless issue and the lawsuit being brought forth against the City of San Clemente. It's sad that it has to come to this and I here as a, as a citizen of San Clemente, am kind of ashamed of the fact that Ed Conner is suing the City of San Clemente and will also bill us for his legal fees with this lawsuit. I'm asking you to fight this on principle. It's very dangerous when religious institutions get involved with public policy and this is what's happening. It's a cartel of religious institutions led by Ed Conner suing the city. So if you look at which institutions are participating, it would be IHOP and I would ask everybody in San Clemente to boycott IHOP. Who else is associated with IHOP? I know that Heritage Christian Church is associated with IHOP. So I would ask your churches, or ask anyone who goes to church, ask if your church is actually participating in this lawsuit. It is, it's, it's putting a gun to the head of the citizens of San Clemente and forcing us to build something that we do not want. And what is really sad is that the state of California and Sacramento, they legalize gambling and they legalize marijuana and they wonder why there's a homeless problem and they put it on the backs of the city. And this is wrong. I want everyone to pay attention to this issue. It's an important issue. So that's what I have on that and I thank you for your time. One more thing, please do not build a sports park, a sports bar at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park. It's right above my house. And I'm glad that project failed. I just hope that you guys don't try to duplicate it again. I think putting a sports bar in a public park is just a bad idea. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Volski?
Good evening, Mayor Hamm, distinguished counsel. My name is Jonathan Volski. I'm here tonight as the Public Information Manager for Santa Margarita Water District. I'm sure you're all aware that Santa Margarita Water District serves the community of Toledo. Santa Margarita, and I know you've got a long list and a long agenda, so I won't give my whole presentation, but Santa Margarita is involved in several projects to decrease our dependence on imported water from Los Angeles and metropolitan. One of those was mentioned earlier, Cadiz, which would bring a new source of water from the Mojave Desert. We're also supporters of the Poseidon Desalination Project in Huntington Beach and hope we see that come to fruition. We're also expanding our recycled water use and actually are moving forward with building a new 5,000-acre foot recycled reclaimed reservoir in Trampas Canyon. So we're doing what we can to decrease our dependence on imported water and also our customers, we appreciate Toledo and everyone else is using less water than ever before. So we know our customers are partners in this. Unfortunately, as in the business world, and we are a business in many ways, we are at the point where we have to look at adjusting our rates. So we have a rate hearing scheduled for 7:00 p.m. on March 4th at our headquarters at 26111 Antonio Parkway in Rancho Santa Margarita. Under Prop 218, which of course governs water districts and the city, we've mailed a notice out to not only all of residents but property owners, so we put 110,000... a notice out to not only all of residents but property owners, so we put 110,000 notices out, uh, in the first-class mail. Uh, the increase, uh, as scheduled, would go over five years. What we're trying to do is balance out, uh, our revenues and also ensure that what we're charging is fair. So you'll see increases in our fixed charges each month, and then you'll see a decrease in what we're actually charging for water. And we, what that'll do is, right now, we have a seasonal bump. When it's, uh, summer and we're selling a lot of water, our revenues go up. Uh, when it's winter and we're not selling as much, or when our customers are conserving, our revenues go down. So we've done a study, and we've determined what it costs to actually run the district, uh, as far as just the operations, the infrastructure and planning for the future, and that's in our fixed charges, and then the actual commodity charge of water is going to actually decrease. So for an average customer with a 3/4-inch meter who's paying a bill of $69 right now, uh, next year we expect that bill to go up to, uh, about $3 to $71.56. So we have a lot more information on our website, which is www.smwd.com. I encourage everyone to take a look at it and feel free to attend the meeting and share their thoughts. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
I'm also going to leave a stack of the notices here for the city clerk if she'll put them at City Hall.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Next up, we have, uh, Lynn, Lynn Jung, and then following Lynn will be, uh, Jill Molino and Donna Vidrin.
Yes, my name is Lynn Jung, and I reside in San Clemente. And I have a, um, a problem with the, uh, recommendation or whatever is coming about with the San Clemente Hospital. Um, my mother, uh, is 93 years old, and she's a resident of San Clemente Villas, which is right next door to the hospital. And, uh, she has been to the emergency room there a good three or four times, and, uh, one time required an admittance to the hospital. And, um, my concern is, um, not having a hospital close enough to where she is, let alone I believe our community needs this hospital. I know that that's another reason why we chose this area, and my mother is not from the California area. She, uh, has been in California for about four years, but, um, just recently, within the past year, has moved to the San Clemente Villas. So I appreciate your time on that, and that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Is it Jill Molino? Did I say that right?
Sill.
Sill. Oh, it's an S, no, okay. My apologies.
No, it's my printing. Council members, thank you for your time. Um, what I found interesting in the chaplain's invocation, he used these words, "community", "safety", "health", and "benefit". And to me, all of those words apply to our hospital. Um, I moved here 12 years ago, and the second question I asked is, "Where is my community hospital?". In every city that I've lived in, there has been a local community hospital. It is important to me and my family. Um, in fact, we have two senior-only communities in San Clemente with hundreds of seniors who take advantage of that hospital on a daily basis. Our city is growing, a large mall is coming in, Rancho Santa Margarita is 25 years to build out, I understand, and, um, the, all the more reason for a hospital. I mean, I just see this as a city that is growing and aging, and I hope that you agree with some of the points that I've made, and you keep our community hospital open. Thank you.
Thank you, Sill. Donna Vidrin, and then following Donna will be, uh, Warren, and then Roger Joel Kier.
My name is Donna Vidrin. I live in San Clemente, and I've been a registered nurse for more than 34 years. Last week, I was scheduled for an employment physical at the urgent care owned by Memorial Care in Lake Forest. I signed in and waited one and a half hours before being seen. There were multiple signs informing me that I might be seen by a physician assistant, but that my care would be supervised by a physician, even though the physician might not be on site during my appointment or care received. There were about 20 people ahead of me in line. Care was not prioritized. A person ahead of me in line was called up to the desk and told that he would have to pay for his care in advance before he could be seen and treated. He looked ill, and after a short discussion, he pulled out his wallet and it, and it appeared he made a payment. All this was in the room where I was sitting and could hear what was going on. The waiting room had many ill people with several of them coughing. It was all in one room with adjoining chairs. Waiting one and a half hours in a room with ill, coughing persons made me apprehensive. I do not have much faith that Memorial Care will staff their super urgent care with an emergency room physician on site 24 hours a day, as they have stated as their intent. Memorial Care and purchasing our San Clemente Hospital has already made promises to the people of San Clemente, the Villas adjoining the hospital, and the physicians on staff at the San Clemente Hospital, and the employees at the hospital. These are promises and commitments that they are not keeping. They are planning to close our hospital and emergency room in San Clemente and to build an urgent care and ambulatory care center. The residents in San Clemente already have access to physicians, urgent care, scheduled surgeries, and procedures. We want emergency services available and a hospital where we can receive care for the unanticipated medical illnesses and surgeries. I toured the hospital last week with my husband and was impressed with the seven-bed ICU that was state-of-the-art and staffed with experienced star ends that have a rec, that have an excellent reputation in our community. It would be so wrong in so many ways to close the San Clemente Hospital so that Memorial Care could make more profit with an urgent care and an ambulatory care center. Memorial Care should sell the hospital if they are no longer interested in the hospital business for San Clemente.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Vidrin, then following him will be Roger Joel Kier and Tony Struthers.
I, I had a nice PowerPoint presentation, but now I know you're supposed to turn it in half a day ahead. Um, I, uh, at, at the open house that Memorial Care, uh, had in, in November, uh, I was fortunate to be able to have a long discussion with Tony Struthers. In particular, I was interested in what business case compelled them to this particular option that he was saying, uh, was the only option, closing the hospital. And he explained the rationale for that decision. They wanted to build a medical tower. Uh, it was impossible, he said, to build a tower with, with, without interrupting hospital operations. And he stated something that's pretty obvious. Hospital operations can't just be turned off and then back on with an interruption. Uh, continuing the hospital then was not feasible. That was the rationale. Now, um, I've researched this, uh, the, the trip to, uh, the hospital to check out what parts of the hospital were used for what was part of that. And I believe that it is feasible to accomplish construction of a tower without interrupting You have some, you have some materials. Um, I, I did bring these materials with me. So, uh, the first, first page, uh, is a, a layout of the, of the hospital, and, uh, the two things in color are the emergency room and the, uh, front entryway area. Uh, the second, uh, page, which is the, uh, reverse side of the first page, uh, shows the, indicates what each hos, part of the hospital is actually used for. Um, the, the plan would involve, um, reconfiguring the admin part, um, as an ER area, and you see that red line down the middle, basically demolishing the part of the hospital to the right of the red line. Now, that would, uh, besides the ER, that really is only some, uh, some offices and a few, uh, hospital bedrooms. Uh, now, what that would allow is a considerable tower, probably larger than they need, uh, to be built. The, uh, the next two pages are two ver, versions of that. Uh, you can make it even larger by combining the two. Uh, that's a lot of room. This is, uh, 120, 160, or with this, uh, over 200,000, uh, square feet.
Can you give us one more sense, Mr. Vidrin, to wrap it up?
Okay. So, uh, it is feasible. Uh, there is no business case, uh, that depends on, uh, having to close the hospital.
Thank you, sir. Roger Joel Kier?
Joel Kier.
And then, uh, is, Joel Kier?
We'll just say Roger Jolliker.
Jolliker. So that's a G, not a C?
J.
But then the C in the middle is a C?
C. Core.
But it's core.
French. Heart.
Okay.
And I speak to you, uh, very quickly from our heart here. We've been residents of San Clemente for three years. Uh, we looked all over when we were going to move from our, uh, residence in Cota de Casa. We went to Arizona, we went to Colorado, we went every place else, and finally settled on a community that had, that met two criteria. One, that the school system had to be outstanding, and we were familiar with capistrates, so we liked that. And secondly, and probably more importantly, it had to have a local hospital for access. Now, I've never been to the hospital. I hope I don't have to go there, but the idea that it's close is very, very important. And the, uh, other thought I want to leave you with is, uh, two other thoughts, really. One, I'm concerned about if this hospital goes away, what does that tell you about the viability of this area that we live in? I think it's going to be a severe hit, and I think as I talk to real estate people, they are very concerned that you pull this away, and, uh, how do you, how do you communicate of a community of 100,000 people that it's not enough to support a hospital? And the second thing that people ask me as I go around and, and talk about this issue, and this is my first effort in really being any kind of a volunteer, they said, "Will you find out and let us know where our elected officials stand on this issue, because we do not know?" And I had to tell them, "I don't know either." So I'm asking you, where do you stand on that issue? I'd like to be able to tell my neighbors exactly where you people stand. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Joel Kier. Tony Struthers, you're up next. Following Tony will be, uh, Mike Clark, and then Karen Sharp.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Tony Struthers. I'm a resident of San Clemente, also the administrator at, uh, Saddleback San Clemente. Um, this evening, I'd like to update you on the ongoing feasibility project underway since August. We still plan to share our findings with the Saddleback Memorial Board of Directors in late March. In addition, I will summarize my thoughts and impressions from our various community interactions and, interactions and presentations. With respect to the feasibility study, a developer for the project, NexCore, has been selected and is undertaking all necessary due diligence to transform the Saddleback San Clemente campus. They have begun interviewing interested physicians and other healthcare providers to share information and gather their input on the proposed state-of-the-art outpatient medical pavilion. Initial conceptual designs are underway to determine the size and scope of the services that may be offered. We are very pleased with the wealth of national knowledge and expertise our developer partner has brought to this leading-edge project. We continue to present our future vision in numerous civic and homeowner groups and have reached over 1,000 residents through these presentations and an open house in October. We've mailed information to over 40,000 households, and we're holding additional open houses January 22nd at Bela Colina Clubhouse in Toledo, and February 2nd at the Ocean Institute in Dana Point. We remain committed to sharing our vision with residents and giving them the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback. Throughout this process, it's become abundantly clear to me that those concerned about the emergency room have little concern for keeping the inpatient hospital beds in the future. They are shocked and amazed at how low our average daily census has fallen. Let me emphasize the reason for this loss of census is not because we've stripped away services from the hospital, as some might suggest. Rather, it's part of a national trend all hospitals are experiencing, as more and more patient needs are best met through outpatient programs and services. So if that is the case, what can be done to address the issue of emergency services remaining on the campus? Shrinking the hospital to a few inpatient beds is not the answer, and it would be extremely challenging to provide safe, quality care to our residents if we went down that path. Another option is legislative or reg, regulatory relief from current constraints that keep us from making this a potential reality. As an organization, Memorial Care is supportive of the concept of freestanding emergency rooms, and we are committed to help support this process any way we can. I applaud the initial investment in forming a community coalition that would investigate and push for this type of regulatory reform. Based on our conversations in Sacramento, we believe there is greater interest than in the past, and I challenge those most concerned about the potential loss of our ER to get behind this process and work as hard as we can to get the attention of California lawmakers. Finally, I'd like to clear up some misconceptions regarding parts of our vision of the future. What we are suggesting as an advanced urgent care center, short of this legislative relief, is not what currently exists in San Clemente or even Orange County today. Being available 24 hours a day, seven days a week with highly, highly qualified physicians and other clinicians, do I have a few minutes? Thank you. Plus advanced diagnostic capabilities will separate this facility from anything currently available in this area. Comparing it to anything already existing or suggesting we already have too many of these facilities is simply not accurate. We're also not proposing developing just another office building in San Clemente. What we are proposing is a creation of a regional healthcare destination that would greatly expand services available to the community in a one-stop, state-of-the-art location. There are solutions to concerns that I have heard from our residents of our community, but I'm absolutely certain that the status quo will not truly serve the community now and especially into the future. I invite our community to attend one of our upcoming open houses to learn more about our vision and what we feel is an important step into the future of the best the healthcare can and will offer in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, Mike Clark, and then following Mike Clark will be Karen Sharp and Gus Giellamas.
My name is Mike Clark. I live in San Clemente, and I want to thank the council for the opportunity that I've had to be a part of the, uh, task force that's been addressing this hospital issue, uh, for some time. And in the, uh, 165 seconds that I have left, um, I, uh, would like to do a couple of things. One, I want to share my general sense of what I think I've learned during this process, and then secondarily, I want to make three specific requests. Um, and so I'm going to read this, because left to my own devices, I will never finish this in three minutes. What I think I've learned is that Memorial Care came to San Clemente a number of years ago, uh, with a commitment to be our healthcare partner and to improve the health and safety of our community. Uh, our community, I'm told, embraced this opportunity, as we should have, because Memorial Care is a very solid organization, and they got some really smart people. Over the years, again, as I've been, as I've learned, some of the improvements Memorial Care and our community hoped for didn't happen, but we do have a, uh, acute care hospital and an emergency department that saved a lot of lives and helped a lot of people over the time and still does. Recently, we've been told by a physician member of Memorial Care's Board of Directors that our community will be better served if Memorial Care closes the hospital and the emergency department and builds a futuristic urgent care center with ancillary outpatient services. Um, as we are beginning to understand, a large percentage of our community doesn't believe this, and, and I'm growing to become one of these. Um, so, here we are, and so on to my, on to my requests. And request number one, uh, deals with the estimated $40 million investment, uh, that we've heard of with respect to the, uh, the urgent care center. And conceptually, I understand what the proposed futuristic urgent care center and outpatient campus will provide, and it, it, as we all know, it doesn't compare to an acute care hospital or a hospital emergency department. So my request to Memorial Care is, what would an equal investment produce if it were made toward improving the hospital and the emergency department? In other words, doing the things that would motivate admitting physicians to make Saddleback San Clemente their primary hospital, that would garner community support, and that would motivate employees to want to work there. You know, we've heard what's not working and why it's not working and why it won't work in the future, but, uh, we haven't heard yet what it would take to make it work in this community. this community. I probably, okay, thank you. My second request is the City Council. Memorial Care is a tax exempt 501(c)(3) public benefit corporation that serves to the benefit of the community. This request is that the City Council meet privately with Memorial Care's board so that they can understand our position on this issue. And third, and final, I request that the, any decisions regarding closing the hospital or emergency department and moving forward with a futuristic outpatient campus be delayed until request number one and two are met. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Karen Sharp, and then Gus Giolamas, and Wendy Esparros.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished City Council. My name is Karen Sharp. I currently live in Capistrano Beach. My family moved to San Clemente in 1966, and I graduated from San Clemente High School. My father was Art Holmes, who was the mayor of San Clemente in the early 1970s during the Nixon administration. I began my career in emergency medical services in the fire service and in EMS in 1983. And over the years, I've been privileged to work in both flight and ground transport, trauma system development, emergency and critical care nursing. I hold a master's degree in leadership and administration, and I'm currently the director of the emergency department at Saddleback Memorial. I am very lucky to have grown up in San Clemente, and the changes to this community should make everyone in this room very proud to be a part of it. But if you look at the history of the hospital, there came a time when, through all the changes of ownership, the reputation changed, and people began to go to other places for their care. Despite our efforts, Saddleback has been unable to completely overcome the old reputation despite dedicated nurses, qualified nurses, physician and staff that worked there. Even my own friends are very open in sharing their opinions with me about the hospital and their reluctance to use it, especially when it comes to critical and emergency care situations. As a designated emergency receiving center, we collaborate every day with EMS and the Orange County Fire Authority, and recognize that in many cases, it is best for patients to bypass Saddleback San Clemente to a higher level of care that offers advanced capabilities to treat cardiac arrest, stroke, trauma, and that can best treat our pediatric population. With our specialty care transport program, we move our most time-sensitive, critical patients from the San Clemente campus to our main campus in Laguna Hills to expedite advanced cardiac stroke intervention. Most of the patients that present in our emergency department receive care in our discharged home. The vast majority of these patients will have the same level of care in a properly-staffed and equipped advanced urgent care center. For those that need to be seen in an emergency department, Mission Hospital is nine miles up the road. As a registered nurse, it is my duty and my privilege to help those in need. My hope for San Clemente and the surrounding community that they will embrace a health and wellness model instead of the illness model of yesterday. I am committed to inform my community about what's possible and where we are all going in our healthcare future. The new outpatient medical pavilion would transform our campus from a small hospital most people previously haven't supported in this community to a thriving healthcare center that is the highest quality, offering advanced urgent care. I'd like to share more about this with you on January 22nd, this Thursday, at the open house. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Karen. Gus Giolamas, and following Gus will be Wendy Esparros and Susan Hinman.
Thank you, Mayor Hamm and City Council, for allowing us to speak about this issue. I'd like to give you, first, as chairman of the Save Our Hospital Committee, an update on our SOS campaign. I'm going to hand out some press clippings to the committee here. This is just sort of a memorialization of our effort so far. To date, the last time I was here, I think I reported on 1,500 signatures to our petition. We now have over 3,000 signatures requesting the hospital to stay open. On December 20th, early morning Saturday, we had approximately 300 of our citizens in their SOS shirts that you see here, make an SOS on the beach, and that was a very successful event for us, all protesting the emergency room and hospital closure. More recently, we had a yard sign campaign on this weekend, this last weekend, where we distributed 250 yard signs to residents who asked for them. That brings to a total of 750 yard signs in our community. Our group is growing. The ground swell of support has been overwhelming. Our intent is to keep our hospital and emergency room open together. That's our priority. Today, there was a tragic fire in San Juan Capistrano, and our prayers are with those children and adults who were affected and treated at our local emergency room and other hospitals. We're also reminded that emergency rooms and hospitals save lives. Last week, Dr. Cullen and I were approached separately by the Saddleback Memorial leadership and asked that we get behind a legislative attempt for a solution. On January 12th, Monday, our group traveled to the state capitol in Sacramento. We met with our assemblymen, Mr. Bill Bro, our Senator Patricia Bates, the California Medical Association, California Hospital Association, among many other assemblymen and senators. There was overwhelming support to keep our hospital open. During our meeting with the California Health Association, they told us that trying to find a solution would take a three-year legislative process. However, much can change in healthcare in three years during that legislative process. Market forces can change. The Affordable Care Act will most certainly look different, and we welcome a three-year delay in closing our hospital. If Saddleback Memorial puts a three-year moratorium on their efforts to degrade and close our hospital and returns our hospital services back to normal, including staffing, ICU beds, and its pre-announcement level, and return us to a viable and vibrant hospital we are, our group, Save Saddleback San Clemente Hospital Foundation, will not oppose those legislative efforts. Absence of the three-year moratorium and the delay in their vote to close our city's only hospital and emergency room, our group will continue to educate and fight to keep our hospital open and protect the health and safety of our citizens, not only here in San Clemente, but our surrounding sister cities of Cabo Beach, Dana Point, and San Juan Capistrano. Lastly, I want to report that tonight's San Juan Capistrano City Council voted overwhelmingly to support a resolution condemning the closure of the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Wendy Esparros. Following Wendy will be Susan Hinman, and then Ricardo Nicol will be the third up.
I'm Wendy Esparros. I live here in San Clemente. I moved here recently from out of state. After looking at several states, we chose San Clemente. And one of the reasons was because it did have a local hospital, as I'm sure that is a factor that many people use. I was struck by the gentleman that received the award recently for saving the woman down by the pier, because I'm thinking that, that probably happens a lot, and those patients are taken to our ER hospital, and that time that it takes them to get there is probably critical when someone is in danger of drowning or dying. And if the hospital gets closed and they have to go farther, you know, that extra distance could mean the difference between life and death. So, I have not had an occasion to use the emergency room, but I did have outpatient surgery recently, and the entire process was very pleasant, and I was so pleased with the care that I received at this hospital. And I'm hoping that you all can do whatever's necessary to keep the hospital here. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Susan Hinman, and the following Susan will be Ricardo, and then Bonnie Barnes.
Mayor Hamm and honorable council members, I'm Susan Hinman. I'm elected by your population in South County to represent Municipal Water District of Orange County Board of Directors on their seven-member board. I just have three things I wanted to share with you for looking at a very exciting year. The first thing that's happening is all 28 of the agencies we work with are working on a water reliability program. That started, the last one was done in 2001. There's a lot of information that needs to be shared and relooked at, and that's being done. We've had two meetings, and by the way, the next meeting is tomorrow between all 28 agencies. There will be a gap analysis done, and that should come about June, so the problems in the water reliability issues for Orange County will come back in June. We'd be happy to share that with your council members, and the final report will be done in early fall. The second thing I wanted to share with you is we have a Water Forum Policy Dinner, February 5th, and we are honored to have Dr. Lucy Jones with the U.S. Geological Survey speaking that night. And she has been doing work with LA in our new water systems. I think it would be worth your time to join us. We need to do planning for emergency response, and I think she will have some very, very important things to share with us. The third thing I wanted to share is the drought is not over. We're having wonderful weather. It's supposed to be in the 80s this weekend, so we have drought. I have some information on drought planning, and also information of what Municipal Water District of Orange County does, just to fill you up in our water supply, water supply issues. As you know, many of the South County cities are dying to 100% dependent on imported water. That's why we're having Lucy Jones speak, because we're all very fearful of earthquakes, and we need to do the planning to be ready in case that happens. Also, we do a wonderful water education program in the elementary schools. If you've not visited, some of your schools, when those are ready, are able. We'd love to have you join us. So, those are some of the things I'd like to share with you that we're doing this year, and I have informational pamphlets to hand out and make available to our new city manager and all council people. Well, I do want to let you know that our staff is more than willing to come down and answer questions or make presentations to the city council. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Next up, we got Ricardo, and Bonnie, and Tom, and the last card is Amy Kuntz.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Ricardo Nicol, San Clemente. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's just me.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just hope you can make, put him up for me.
Come here, start his clock. Tim, you're a computer guy. Think it happens.
Oh, well.
Whoa, grab it.
Well.
Okay, don't.
Bonnie has the same thing on a thunder eye.
I think that's what this is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think my three minutes are over.
Try not clicking it. So, just put your finger over it, and then now scroll over to the...
Yeah, it's not working.
It's not? Oh.
It's not that.
See, now, don't push anything, just go over to the... Keep it low. Keep the mouse low. Nope.
Just close all windows from the bottom.
You want to try Bonnie's flash and see if it really gets to the flash?
I think that's, I'm going to let me do that. Do you want to try the flash?
Is there a 12-year-old in the audience that can fix this for us?
Yeah. My time's up. Okay, well, I don't...
You drive Bonnie's, is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, I told you. I did. The mouse won't even move. We can't...
Okay, well.
Let me see if I can do it from here. Maybe it's just the mouse.
We could just do the presentation, listen to it.
Well, you know, it's going to be very difficult to make my point, but...
We'll be back in two weeks with the visuals, but let's go on with our presentation. They need to hear what the coastal commission said.
Okay, let's, let's get on with it. Okay, I'll, I'll just do the verbal...
Sorry, Ricardo.
So, okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Ricardo Nicol, San Clemente. For two years now, starting in January 2013, I and others have been trying to tell you what a bad plan for the North Beach parking lot, a plan that you're familiar with, is. I was going to show it up there. We even drew other plans to show you there were better alternatives, and I was going to have one of them up there. Incidentally, the green that we show in our plan is drought-resistant for landscape. At one time, about a year and a half ago, you seemed to agree with us that it was a bad plan, the city's plan. And so, you decide, you agreed to hire a second consultant to produce all your ideas. But about one year and $80,000 later, the new consultant came back with the exact same plan, because incredibly, his contract with the city required him to follow the same old plan. But even more incredible, this time, you approved the plan. I beg you to reconsider, but to no avail. So, in September of this year, you sent the project to the California Coastal Commission. After finally getting all the necessary information from the city, the commission acted on the project, rejected the design, and unanimously voted to send it back to the city for revisions based on the alternative plan that Tom and Bonnie Barnes and I had presented to illustrate our points. Believe me, if the commissioners had not been tired from deliberating for nine hours before one came up, the, they would have denied the city's project, the city's application outright. And again, please believe me, if you do not pay attention this time, the coastal commission will turn the application down in 60 days, when it's supposed to go back. And then, it will be 200 and a half years, and almost $200,000 in consultant fees and staff time, and nothing to show what's happening to schedules and budgets in this city. And talking budget, please save $100,000 and get rid, if you remember on the city's plan, get rid of, get rid of the irrelevant and unnecessary archway and walkway. This is no site for farmers' market, concerts, outdoor lectures, and special events. It is next to a very busy highway, major highway, with cars, trucks, buses, not even 20 feet away. A far better site is already available for special events. It's up there, the triangle section, parking, the parking area, next adjacent to the grass slope of the beach club, has very nice landscape, can be easily roped off, and it's much more quiet. Thank you for your attention.
Could I ask a quick question of the city manager?
Sure.
What is your next step?
I'd like to distribute this, another view of the triangle area.
I have a question for the city manager.
The one on the right is...
So, I'm sorry. Hold on, Bonnie.
Bonnie, I'm talking.
Bonnie, Bonnie, hold on one second.
Rick, Rick, once, I have a question. Are you advocating for the alternate, then? Is that what you want, the alternative?
Well, can we, hold on, before we start, why is everyone speaking over Laura right now? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I have a question for the city manager. In what form will the city council get a summary of what transpired at the coastal commission and what the action items were and the timetable? Is a staff report forthcoming, or, and/or what's the next time hurdle on this project?
Staff is meeting this week. Eric Sun, Bill Cameron, myself, planning staff, and we're gonna go over the coastal commission report and how that was handled, what our next steps are, what we think is the path. We're gonna present that to the council in a memo format. And then, at that time, the council can decide if they want us to bring it back. We have an approved project right now, and...
We have an approved project?
We have an approved project from the council. So, the council needs to, someone from the majority council that approved that back in May, I believe it was, in 2014, needs to call the item back up for reconsideration. So, I think once staff goes over the project and the coastal commission comments, we'll present another memo to the council and then, to the five of you, and then someone from the council needs to call it up to reconsider it, if you think that based on our memo, you need to do that.
Okay, thank you.
But we don't have the direction right now from the council to reconsider the project.
Oh, well, if you, I would like to have it brought back to council. I'm willing to wait until your memo comes out, so that we have an understanding of, you know, what happened at the meeting, but I'm very interested in having it on the agenda.
And we plan to give you that rundown after we meet and discuss the project.
So, in the next two weeks? And is there any deadline with the coastal commission? Are we on their agenda for a time certain?
On their agenda for March, I forget the exact date.
60 days.
60 days. It's two months later. It's in San Diego. That meeting is in San Diego. And, you know, I know the coastal commission as a body had their position, but I also think that based on my discussions with staff and their meetings with coastal commission staff, their conversations, that they thought the coastal commission staff was supportive of the city's proposal. And then it changed, as often does, at the dais. But we'll be running that down in the...
So, there'll be a memo coming to council?
Yes.
Okay, but just for your information, I'm inclined to have it put on the agenda unless there's something, you know, based on the memo.
I have a question for Rick. Yeah, Rick Nicol. So, you're advocating for the alternative plan here with the 35-foot setback in the green area?
Well, yes. As a much farforable plan than the, than the city's plan.
Why the, why a 35-foot buffer?
Well, it's for a couple of reasons, for a couple of reasons. For one thing, this is the, this is the, that plan on the right has about, what is it, Vani, about 20, 30% more pavement than it needs to have for that, for that number of cars. So, the coastal commission looked at the green and the asphalt on those two plans, and they said, "What's going on? We have one more parking space on the, on the plan on the left, and we have all that pavement."
Did they recognize they're gonna have hundreds of acres of green open space right across the street?
They weren't acting on that. They weren't acting on that.
That's obvious.
This is also an entrance to the city. Also, the closer you get to the highway, the higher you are on the lot, and the more obstructive the views are.
I'm just curious, are we also gonna have 35-foot buffers along the rest of El Camino Real to keep it away from the busy highway?
I'm sorry.
If you're advocating for 35-foot buffers, I'm just curious where that's gonna be applied along the rest of El Camino Real?
No, no. This is, this is a, this is a gateway to the city, this area. It's been, it's been pronounced as such. It's been touted as such, that it's part of making a really desirable aesthetic statement at the entrance to the city. That's why those, that archway was being put in there, that ridiculous archway and that ridiculous block.
So, just so that I understand, the parking lot is now gonna be our gateway to the city?
No, no.
Okay.
That location is an important location. That, so, there's a reason, because it is, has all that tremendous amount of traffic in front of it, coming into the city, that it'd be an aesthetically pleasing thing, and it'd be, have a good buffer between, between the highway and the cars. And the cars, by being placed lower on the lot, towards the ocean, are lower on the lot and less obstructive to the, to the views from the highway. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, this is, this item's really not on, on the council agenda.
Yeah.
And so, it's oral communications, and you can ask questions. Yeah, I understand, you can ask questions. Yeah, we can't debate the merits or demerits of the, the alternative plans at this, at this point.
Okay, Vani?
I'm Vani Barnes, resident of San Clemente. On January 8th, the coastal commission did not approve a plan permit for the city's east here parking lot, Tan Zero. The lot is also identified as a major scenic roadway corridor in the city's local coastal plan and the city's coastal element, requires sites for new developments to minimize and preserve the ocean view. It's a requirement, and to not block it. This is the street view of the protective view corridor from El Camino Real, with the ocean view horizon over parked cars and through the MetroLink corridor. The larger sign is where a row of 13 cars will be parked in the city's plan with cars set back only five feet from the sidewalk. The smaller sign, number two, the height of it, is where the road of, rows of parked cars will be in the alternative, set back 35 feet, where the ground is lower by at least a foot and a half. This is what the city's plan will look like with the cars that are five feet in height. Cars will block the ocean views across the horizon and through the MetroLink corridor. Even without the melaleuca trees, one of the conditions, the cars ruin the ocean view, and once it's gone, it's gone forever. There will be 13 cars parked like this across 180 linear feet of view corridor, with only five feet of green area in front. The alternative plan, set back 35 feet, where the ground is at least one and 1/2 feet lower, will look like this. And the view will be softened and enhanced with about 6,300 square feet of landscaping along El Camino Real. The green area consists of succulents and drought-tolerant shrubs from OCFA's approved pallet, not lawn or grass. Existing trees above the horizon will not block the ocean views. Comparing the two plans, the city plan on the left hides the ocean views, while the alternative on the right preserves them. The alternative's separate entrance, exit, and one-way circulation is safer, and it is a bike corral, P E V, about 30% less concrete and asphalt, and 40% more permeable landscaping. Most importantly, cars set back 35 feet on lower ground preserve the ocean views over the cars. The coastal commission and staff support the alternative, and we should too. And FYI, this bike corral is recommended by Pete Van Nuys, executive director of the Orange County Bicycle Coalition. It can hold 14 bikes in one parking space and will not damage bike ribs. Thank you.
Tom?
Save the hospital.
Hey, Tom.
Okay. We appeared before you two weeks ago, and we asked you to pull your plan, because we didn't think it'd be accepted by the coastal commission. Two days later, we went to the coastal commission. They sat through five hours of Laguna Beach, and by the time they got to us, they only wanted out of there. But once we showed our slides and made our presentation, they changed their mind. It was very clear what they said, and if you wanna know what they said, just go to the coastal commission website. It's right there on tape. You can watch the whole thing. You can watch it over and over. I've watched it about 15 times. So, it's available. For example, Commissioner Greg Cox commented after we finished our nine-minute presentation. Frankly, I like the alternate better than I do the city's proposal. And that became the accepted idea. You could just see, watching their eyes, everybody more or less agreed with Mr. Cox. But remember, they wanted out of there. It was after 7:00 at night. They'd been through a grueling five hours with 250 people from Laguna Beach. So, we had everything going against us. Now, Director Direct, excuse me, Deputy Director Sherilyn Sarb stated that the coastal commission staff would be changing our recommendation to include a condition for revised plans that incorporate the alternative that has been presented to the commission today. Unequivocal, very clear, they were changing their position. If the applicant would, could accept the idea of the alternative plan, that would be preferable from the staff's standpoint. So, they threw it out there, was up to the applicant. The city's representative, Assistant City Manager Eric Sun, was silent on this request. He didn't respond, he didn't say anything.
Not advancing.
Probably not. All right. Next, Chairman Steve Kinsey asked the coastal commission staff if 60 days would be enough time to evaluate the alternative plan. Sarb replied, "It will be dependent on how willing the city is to give us the alternative plan information," already anticipating that there would be problems with the city. In response to that possibility, the chairman instructed the commission staff, and I quote once again, "If you don't get a cooperative city, you might at least be able to review this internally and reflect on it." So, he's saying the staff needs to do it whether the city cooperates or not. Very clear. The chairman asked Sun if the city had considered the alternative plan. Sun said, "Yes, but it was rejected because of, quote, 'public safety.'" He said, "That large, that large grass area..." And by the way, there's no grass area in the alternative plan. I don't know where it came from, but there is no grass area. He said that that large grass area would become more or less a home for the homeless." And that was his response why the alternative plan was rejected by the city, that it was a public safety issue. Listen, you are going before the coastal commission, and you want an LCP passed. Can I have about 10 seconds? You wanna get an LCP passed. How can you take such an inferior plan to them that destroys your credibility with the coastal commission, and then expect to get the LCP? Really, you got bigger fish to fry. The alternative plan, or Ricardo's plan, whatever you wanna call it, is a superior plan. You should just endorse it. The coastal commission's already endorsed it, and you go with it. And then you can work on the more important things. And I can answer any questions, and I'm willing to meet with the staff or anybody, any place, anytime, anywhere, because we wanted to get this done. We shouldn't be spending our time on this.
So, nice, no sidewalk access, then?
Yes.
Where?
On the alternative plan? Is it, are you talking about El Camino Real, or are you talking about DeSacha?
Where's the sidewalk access to El Camino Real?
Oh, don't do that.
I don't know what happened.
Don't touch it.
Well, there's a sidewalk on East El Camino Real. And there's on DeSacha, there's a sidewalk on each side, so that you can walk to your cars without having to walk in the, in the parking lot itself.
But there's no sidewalk access to El Camino Real?
No sidewalk access to El Camino Real?
I'm just looking at the plan. There's no sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk right along El Camino Real.
Right, I know, but nothing to the parking lot?
To the parking lot?
That's not where it's accessed from.
It's accessed from DeSacha.
It's accessed from DeSacha.
Because that's where you go in and out, is DeSacha. You don't go in and out.
Pedestrian and vehicular, that parking is accessed from DeSacha.
There, you can see, right there.
It's one-way.
And this is another thing the coastal commission...
Tom.
The fact that there was a lot of...
I don't have any questions, Tom. Tom, thank you, sir.
All right. I'm sorry, you're heated here, but...
I understand.
I feel we didn't...
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening, folks. Last person this evening's gonna be Amy Kunsey, or Kuns. West Chicago, Illinois.
Yes.
Yay.
Wow.
I'm here for, on behalf of me and my father, Don Kunsey.
Oh.
Um, sorry.
We love your father.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you guys for the gorgeous plant that you sent with my mom's passing,
Again, just to thank the staff, the city, and the council for the plant that they sent to my mom's memorial. It showed to myself and my family why we call San Clemente Home. Amy was born and schooled here in San Clemente, and she always will have a strong feeling for this. She wants to thank you for your thoughtfulness, everybody, and looks like she's leaving me some time. As you know, people always ask, "What are you gonna do now?" Well, now you know what you guys are gonna be stuck with, you know, a lot more time to come and spend with you. So, thank you very much.
Sorry for your loss, Don. Amy, thank you for coming. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I got, I got sidetracked there.
Before we move on, can I, I wanna ask a question of Mayor...
Before you ask that question, though, if I can make a comment on that. So, I think it was Mr., the French gentleman, Jules de Cuir, Jules de Cuir? Did I say that right? Did I say that correctly? Okay, I'm getting better. Well, I'm hoping that the Safe San Clemente Hospital Foundation does a better job in the future of informing you what the city council's done, and that we adopted a resolution opposing the closure of San Clemente Hospital. So, we did that unanimously, exactly as Mr. Baker just stated, and we also instituted a committee, which has had its last meeting subsequently. And I think Mr. Baker was about to ask him what the next item of that committee is going to be.
I was. I attended some of those committee meetings. I thought they were very helpful and very fruitful, and I was asking the mayor if there were some plans for some next steps. Are there any conversations about some, some next steps to go on? It seemed like both sides made a couple of concessions that I heard at the microphone this evening, so maybe there's, maybe we're getting a little closer to, to the middle ground here. Is there any plans for that, Mr. Mayor?
We're, myself, Assistant City Manager Eric Sun, and then Lori, have you confirmed yet?
Yes.
Lori Doncheck will be attending a meeting next week, Monday, with the upper management with Memorial Care, Mr. Struthers, who's in the audience tonight, and will be discussing some of those options that were discussed evening by both sides. I'm hoping that the request from the Safe San Clemente Hospital Foundation won't fall on deaf ears, and we can maintain our hospital until we get resolution on this item. I think that's a fair middle ground, like Mr. Baker stated.
Was Mr. Clark invited to that meeting also, or is there... No.
He's not invited, but I did discuss with Eric Sun, and I think I'm gonna be meeting with Mr. Clark prior to that meeting, to just go over a couple of items.
Thank you.
So, just a reminder, thank everybody who was involved with that committee. We had a lot of committee members. We had three very long meetings, and a lot of people got involved. Fortunately for us, as we went on, the meetings got more and more crowded, and people got more and more involved. And for the most part, it was maintained a pretty civil atmosphere. We had a couple of outbreaks, but civil for the most part, and I think it was, is very valuable.
I thought it was very valuable, and I wanted to commend the mayor on, on running a terrific meeting and all those meetings I went to. So, thanks for that.
Yeah, well, as you can tell, these red shirts are very unruly people.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on, guys.
Mr. Clark will be at the meeting with the city.
Oh, fantastic.
So, we did confirm that today, so thank you to Mr. Clark.
There we go. Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor, is there gonna be any representation from the Safe Hospital Foundation with the meeting with the upper echelon of Memorial Care?
I wasn't planning on, on doing that, but I'll be...
Is that a public meeting?
I don't think that's going to be a public meeting, no, no. So, I...
We get a, we get some sort of idea of what was discussed at this meeting?
I can give you a rundown, exactly. Yep.
I just came in. Who is that? I'm Debbie, but who will be at this meeting? I'm sorry, I can't...
Uh, myself, Assistant City Manager Eric Sun, Councilwoman Doncheck, and then Mike Clark, and also the upper management from Memorial Care.
Upper Management, Memorial Care.
Steve Guy, Tony Struthers, and then, Tony, is there gonna be someone else? Just two? Okay. Yep. So, thank you very much for coming out this evening. I noticed there was not any talk about the city council resolution, this packet, by the way.
Sorry?
There was no talk about the resolution, this packet, by the way.
We'll amend...
Thank you. Okeydoke. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
For what?
Wave reading in full?
So, move.
Okay. What? You have a comment you wanna make before we close oral communications? Okay.
Moved away the reading.
I already...
Second.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Casas 5-0.
Close session report, city attorney.
The city council took no reportable action during the portion of the closed session I attended. I don't know if you have anything else to report.
Oh, I actually do have, we are going to reconvene closed session to consider Item C at, at the close of the business meeting tonight.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Thank you, Lori.
Okay. While items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion, unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. The public has requested the removal for discussion of Item L, that's Parking Prohibitions on Sarmantoso.
Okay. Lori?
I'd like to pull 6B as in boy 3.
Tim?
I'd like to pull Items F and G.
F and G, it's always F and G. Kathy?
6B 1.
6B 1. Bob? What? What items?
This is a bad market.
Uh, yeah, I'm just looking at it. Okay, go for it.
I'll move the balance.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Baker. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five zero. Item Six B one. Kathy?
I had questions on this. I saw that Tom was here. Does that have to be on there? I know. I'm sorry. The Coastal Advisory Committee met, I think it was in November, no, December 11th, and they requested that the city council agendize expanding the street sweeping program to more streets. And I wanted to ask a few questions on that because it seems like we keep getting to the same point. I was looking at minutes of the Coastal Advisory Committee meeting from February 13th of 2003, and they're talking about almost identical issues that they're talking about now. Not so much expanding it, but still complaining about the seven o'clock. We still, do we start ticketing at seven o'clock?
Yes, we do.
Okay. In 2003, they were, there's pages of where people were complaining about that, how hard it was to have your car out by seven o'clock when most people start at eight, or leave for their work at eight. And they were talking about whether they should expand the program, and if it was worthwhile picking, you know, how much we were actually getting for the money and all of that. So my question to you, I guess, is, why shouldn't this just come to the, the city council now? Soon? When it's being recommended?
Okay. Good evening, council members. Tom Bonnigut, Assistant City Engineer. And I, I just said, yes, we do, but I think, I need to double check that. I'm actually, my brain was stuck in 2003. I think we changed the parking ticket hours from nine, it's a window from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So I apologize for my misspeaking. So that change was made-
Okay.
In response to the outcry. I was still living a decade ago. I apologize. As for the second part of your question, you know, your council-appointed committee, that is Coastal Advisory Committee, from time to time, they take up this issue. Street sweeping does come up from time to time. We have change of membership. This issue has been before the council in various forums to look at expansion of, of the ticketed zones, if you will, and, and other tweaks to the program. But the program largely has been in place for a number of years based on, you know, previous councils who've decided that, you know, what's working right now is what it's doing. As you saw in the notes, the Coastal Committee has been talking about this issue again, and the way we do it protocol is, you know, they make a recommendation, and we bring that to the city manager to discuss with you all if it's your inclination, because they're an advisory committee, if you want to even take up the issue. So they've basically made that request to agendize it, and, you know, if we get that direction that your council wants to do that, then we'll put together a report. But I think that's where we are on that particular issue in terms of looking at potential street sweeping changes. We, right now, we're, we're kind of looking for a direction, staff is, if we are going to bring that forward. We always, just as, by way of background, you know, it's, staff, we are liaison to the committee. When they make a recommendation, it's our duty to bring it forward to you. We don't filter, you know, what your advisory committees are doing. We pass that on. Try and add technical background when you request it, but I don't know if I'm giving you the right answer, but it's, it's raised, basically, we're waiting on council direction. If you want to accept the committee's request to agendize that and have a further discussion, we can't make that call, staff. Did I answer your question?
I think you did. And, you know, obviously, we can't discuss it now, but-
Are you requesting the-
I am requesting it because we raised the rate for the ocean fee, was it a year ago?
About so.
Not quite, but yeah, I think so.
And I don't know if the council actually took up reviewing our program to see what the issues are and what best practices are. And I just think maybe it's a good review. And also reviewing, I think we should review the notification process and what other cities do, just to maybe be more efficient on the program and meet the guidelines, but-
You're requesting-
I just wanted to bring it up.
You don't need to have someone second that, just want the request, they'll put it on the agenda, correct?
It, in the past, councils voted on it when it's come up at a meeting.
Okay. Okay, so-
And we've spoken about it a couple of different times in the past, and the science on that has been so weak that we decided not to expand it beyond the current spot. We've, we've talked about whether or not it's, it's essential for the clean ocean to actually sweep up leaves that are in the street. You know, we, we do an awful lot of, we take an awful lot of effort in keeping our ocean clean. We spend an awful lot of money on vector trucks and, and storm drain screens and, and cleaning out that kind of stuff that, that the council in the past has felt did that already versus what some other cities do, and that's sweeping the entire city. And so, that's where the subject has been before.
Tom, do we sweep the alleys?
I think we do. I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, but they are public streets like anything else. We sweep our city parking lots, and I'm certain that we, we'll certainly do the alleys, but I'll make sure and get that back to you.
I know, I know we do sweep the alleys. For-
Yeah, we have parking restrictions, right?
Yeah, we sweep the alleys.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I discussed it with-
Yes, we do.
With staff earlier this year about changing the time frame.
Well, I'm just wondering what you think of that, because-
So you're requesting agendize it. I think we can bring the vote.
Well, we have a committee that's been talking about it, and it has some knowledgeable people on it, and they're saying it's best practice to pick up as much as you can before it gets into the ocean. And we only have a certain part of the town that's actually being swept. Is that the best practice? I don't know. I haven't been on the council.
Well-
So I just thought we should review it. They're asking for it to be agendized.
Okay.
Then we could review what we're doing, and they could come and talk to us and tell us what they think, rather than we're seeing it in minutes.
Okay. So we'll vote on whether or not we're going to agendize this item? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. There we go, three, two. With Baker, Brown opposed.
And who's seconded?
Uh, there was, I asked you if you needed a second. You said no.
That would be me.
Oh. Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, when we do bring that back to the gen, if we could look at one item I want to look at. I know that on my street that is ticketed, the street sweeper comes 90% of the time within the same 30 minutes. And it seems to me that we could nail down an hour timeframe as opposed to, I think it's a four-hour timeframe now, nine to one. So if we could look at tightening those timeframes up, I know that's not always going to be exact, but a four-hour timeframe when 90% of the time is coming within the same 30-minute span just seems to me like they're very efficient in their job, they know how to do it, and that's why we contracted those companies. So, and then also, a high-level look at if there's any cities locally that are providing their own street sweeping services.
Okay.
And what their budgets are.
Basically, how cities are providing those services.
What their budgets are, yeah, compared to ours.
So if I could just recap briefly, this will be a report, and it'll be focused on the street sweeping aspect of Clean Ocean Program as opposed to an entire program review, looking at items about what other cities are doing, how they provide those services, and what they cost. Looking into the time windows that we have for street sweeping parking restrictions, looking at the notification processes for street sweeping, I heard. Basic, kind of like an overall review of, of the street sweeping aspect. Am I, am I that correct? Okay.
And because I'm new, could you send me something personally, just on what is spent on the, by the Clean Ocean Fee? What we spend on advertising and notices and all of that? You know, our outreach program? Just how much money goes to that?
Yeah, we can put together a breakdown, and I'll, I'll get that to the city manager so everyone has that.
I think it was like 10% of the Clean Ocean Fee was dedicated to that.
We'll, we'll put that together.
Okay, can we have a motion then to-
Hang on, one, one more second, Jim. I was waiting for Tom to finish writing there.
Yeah, I got you. Thank you, Bob.
Well, there's one, there is one place that I, I think the street sweeping program does fall down, and that, to me, is the sweeping of the parking lots-
Okay.
-that are heavily used close to the beach and close to my house. Any, anytime you hear any report from any committee about what they found on the beach, the number one thing far and away is always cigarette butts. And guess what's in all the parking lots heavily used at the beach?
Okay.
So if we're going to sweep something, and that's, to me, we should look at sweeping there versus trees.
Okay. We'll address that as well.
So if we can have a motion then to receive and file the balance of those minutes.
So move.
Second. Motion by, motion by Baker, second by Ham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Okay. Six B three, was that Laurie?
Yeah, that's me, and I'm specifically looking at page five, which is the downtown license plate survey. And I, I, it does say in here that this is coming to city council. When will that be? Approximately, what month? It should be February. I'm not sure which meeting. Because I think, well, probably the second meeting in February, but I haven't talked to James about it on scheduling. So my challenge to you, hi, Jim, is these minutes are really hard to figure out what was going on in the meeting, and so I'm expecting the report to kind of be organized by priorities and be succinct, and that you're going to have some sort of clever way that if the group wants to insert, quote, "without permit" between, quote, "no parking" and, quote, "the word between," that that's all going to be cleaned up, and we're just going to see the revised Planning Commission presentation somehow organized from biggest ideas to smallest ideas? Sure. And it sounds like there's three buckets of recommendations. Is that accurate? Um, yeah, kind of. What happened was, I think it expanded a little bit beyond the scope of what the intent of the work was, which was to survey the five-hour parkers- Yeah. ...in the downtown and see where people were, long-term parkers were parking, and see if there's ways to improve the, the management of those. So the report that will come to council will focus on that particular aspect. Okay. So you'll basically clean it up with Planning Commission recommendations and maybe just do a footnote system if there's something where staff feels that- We'll make it very clear and simplify it a little bit. It did go kind of into a longer conversation with the Planning Commission. Because I was both impressed and mystified by the fact that the license plate analysis could lead to valet programs, a shuttle bus, the library parking is a good one, buying new parking lots and whatnot. So I'm going to be really curious to see how you bring it to council. So it's, it's going to focus on the long-term parkers, and that's where the recommendations are going to be. Right. And then one of the implementation measures of the general plan is to look at some of these other things. Yes. And so that's what those, ones that are kind of confusing you are, or about what we would- They're not confusing me, they're just distracting me from what I thought was the purpose of the study. Okay, distracting you. Yeah. So your challenge in your staff report is to make it very- Succinct and clear. Succinct and clear, and start with the big ideas and these things about inserting "without permit" between the word "between" and "no parking," you know? Okay. Okay.
Uh, before you move the item, are you-
Okay, yeah, what, did you want to add?
Yeah, I wanted to-
No, I didn't have any comments.
I want to add that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, one of the things that I, I looked at on here was the resident parking permits from nine to nine. And I saw that it seemed like it was one of the things that they agreed upon, but then on the back on the bolts, it wasn't added there. And that seemed to me, I get a lot, lots of questions about that. So is that going to be brought along with this?
That's one of the recommendations, is how to deal with the resident parkers.
Okay. So that's something we're going to look at, because I was just confused in the way it's mentioned here, but then on, on the resolution, it was not mentioned. Is that because, I was, I was just concerned if, is that not something that was-
No.
A majority vote, or what was the?
No, that was part of the recommendations.
Okay, great, okay.
But the mayor's making an interesting point, because this idea of requesting information on how the 24-hour parking lots are cleaned, I was like, oh, you know, that's, that's really forward thinking. Then I look at the next steps, and there's no mention of parking lot cleaning. So that was another challenge with these minutes. Okay. Anyway. Okay, so succinct, high priority, clear. A fifth grader could get it. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'll move the item.
Second. Okay, let's, motion by Doncheck, second by Ham. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passes five zero. Next item, F. Oh, man. I don't want to hear anything other than we're building this thing tomorrow, Jim. I pulled the item only because I think it's important that the community knows progress being made on this. This is, this is an important element, that every time that this comes up, it feels almost, I'm happy it's here, and I'm particularly happy that we're able to procure some help on this for the design services. We were going to fund this whole thing out of pocket, and because staff was pressing about this and really had some foresight, we're able to get some assistance on this, which ultimately will prove for a better beach trail and will, you know, help us get it built quicker. So I just wanted to recognize the good work that's being done, and I think it's very exciting to see the progress being made, and I look forward to being able to have that put into place ASAP. Tom? Well, I just wanted to get an impromptu high five since me and you are through. Well, I actually want a high five.
Yeah, no, I was just going to put it.
I'm excited. Yeah, this is going to be great. Yeah, this is going to be great. Did you get that? You get that? One more high five. One more high five from Tim, you ready? Ready to hear this?
Right there, that just happened.
What do you got, Bob?
And Jim, as part of this beach trail and as part of the planning for that beach trail, there's an awful lot of sand down there available around that beach trail extension. So should there be some opportunity to, if we got to dig it up anyway, to maybe, yeah, move it somewhere? I'm thinking a couple of beaches could probably use that, just food for thought and if you would, you know, keep that in the back of your mind there.
Don't tell the state we're going to take their beach, though. Don't report them, just do, just...
Well, we'll be with our friends at the state.
Thank you.
And our designer is right over here, Art Guy with BGB, and he heard you, so...
Fantastic.
Should the opportunity present itself?
We have one speaker card on this, so, Tim, if you're done, we'll let Brenda make comments. I move the item.
Second, out.
Yeah.
I'm on both, actually. Bob hit the nail on the head. In the grant request, we made sure we included access to sandy beaches. Talk about a cost-effective way to get more sand, just bring the people to the sand. Don't necessarily add more sand where Mother Nature will take it away. So, and of course, as the town dreamer, when the beach trail eventually goes all the way to Tressels, and those of us who are aging baby boomers who maybe can't walk anymore, we can actually ride our little wheelchairs all the way to Tressels and look at that beautiful break over that sacred San Mateo Creek bed. So let's keep moving. You're right. Thanks.
Thanks, Brenda, and with that I move the item. Motion by Brown, second by Doncheck, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five, zero. G? Is that you, that's you as well?
Same thing.
Oh, same thing, F and G, that's right. L?
Yeah, must move both.
Move both, okay, we move both with that motion, there we go. Let the record show. L. Saramentosa. Exciting stuff, parking restrictions all over the place. Brent, Brent, you pulled this item? Yeah. You're opposing this? No, Brenda.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, this is all for you, so. Let us know what you got.
Yeah, you know, this particular issue of parking in a school zone, vehicular parking in a school zone that obstructs or blocks access to or impedes public safety in a school zone, every community across the country really needs to take a high standard here. And fundamentally, we know that the crush of cars in a school zone is created by the fact that so many children are driven to school, typically one child or two children at a time. Parents won't let their children bicycle or walk to school because they're afraid of the vehicular traffic concerns. So we have to take a high standard here, and staff's recommendation is right on the money, especially in a school zone. We need to prioritize safe passage for the kids on bikes. So please, I support this, and I hope you do too.
Great, thank you, Brenda. Anybody want to move the item?
I'll move item L.
Second, motion by Doncheck, second by Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. First public hearing is to consider general plan clarifications and amendment initiation, and staff is recommending that council continue this item to the council meeting of February 3rd to ensure that all affected property owners are given ample notice.
I'll make the motion to continue the item.
Okay, well first I'm going to open the public hearing.
Sorry.
It's now open? We have any cards?
No, sir.
It's now closed?
No, it's not closed.
Oh, I don't want to close it, oh, I want to move, I want to continue it, right? So, not closed, let's continue it.
Okay.
The gavel can close it, a gavel can open it again, right?
Yeah.
I think the gavel could pretty much do anything.
Yeah.
So we need a second.
Okay.
And before we vote, though, I'd like to make a specific request on the staff report because I struggled with it. Well, my first comment for discussion among us is should this go to the planning commission first? So that's one. But then secondly, you know, we have these seven locations, and then for, then we have these attachments that don't obviously key to the seven locations. And then some have narrative and exhibits and some don't. If staff could work out for the seven locations, maybe a chart that's, here's the location, here's what's been approved, here's the recommendation and any narrative that staff feels is appropriate, that would be very helpful because it's, the raw materials here, it would be just nice to have the next step, which is synthesize it for the next, so that was one comment.
Well, I'll make a comment, too. I thought the depth and clarity in the staff report was outstanding myself.
The detail was excellent.
I thought that, I thought it was very well done, very well laid out. The attachments were a little bit difficult to find, but they were all there. So, but I appreciated the depth and the amount of information that was in here, and very well presented. So whoever did that, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I don't want to send this back to the planning commission. I think it should just come back to us. Yeah. So, we need to take a vote on that?
So can I clarify? What this item was doing was asking for clarification of what the land use was in the general plan.
Exactly.
And you feel that you know exactly what the council voted on? Okay.
Yep.
Could I also point out that if, the action that you're being, that you're continuing is to initiate a general plan amendment, assuming that you move forward, then the public hearing process will involve planning commission hearings before a final action can be taken after a public hearing that the council holds.
So walk us through the sequence, then?
This, the action that you'll consider on February 3rd is to initiate a general plan amendment, which, the effect of that will be to direct staff to go back to the planning commission and run these recommendations through from planning commission to city council. They'll have to go to planning commission first.
Anyway, okay.
Yes.
And then it comes back to us the third time?
Correct.
I need a little clarification. Exactly, yeah, the planning commission already weighed in on this and public already had an opportunity to speak on every one of these items when it went through planning commission. If you look at the notes, they have it coming.
But you're initiating a general plan amendment. The process for a general plan amendment, whether it's clarification or change, you know, dotting an I or crossing a T, is you have to go to the planning commission first.
Okay. But it's going to come back to us.
It should happen a little bit smoother, more smoothly than, you know, than the large general plan amendment that triggered this.
Just for clarification, from beginning to end, it went GPAC, planning commission, council, council, planning commission, council again. And then when we approve it, the final time it's approved. Correct? Okay, yeah.
It's not going to GPAC, though?
No, I didn't, that was, I'm starting from the beginning, just clarifying there, it's like a wave up and then down, and then back up again, just for clarification. Okay.
Did you determine if there was anybody that wanted to speak tonight that couldn't come back another time?
There was no cards, so.
No, you guys aren't going to speak?
You have plenty of opportunities.
I've been here a long time, I'll be here.
Yeah.
You know, somehow I knew that you would be here. I knew it, I called it.
Okay. So a motion by Doncheck to...
No, it was by Kathy.
It was by Kathy?
Exactly.
Okay, I swear Doncheck did, because you said you wanted to go to the planning commission.
No, no, you made the motion and then to...
Okay, so, motion by...
To continue it.
Or, second by Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five, zero. It's moved.
Next is a report from the Public Works Director, City Engineer, concerning approval of the landscape conceptual design for the North El Camino Real Class One Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Project.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'm Bill Cameron, Public Works Director and City Engineer, and I'm pinch-hitting for our Transportation Engineering Manager, Tom Frank, who was sick today and unable to attend the council meeting. Back in July, the city council reviewed the 60% design for the North El Camino Real Class One Bicycle and Pedestrian Path landscaping conceptual design, as well as the design of the project as far as the street widths, bike lanes, and the pedestrian and bike path. And we're coming back to you tonight with the conceptual design, a more final conceptual design than was brought before the council then. And Art Guy, the landscape architect we hired to assist the city with this project, is here to help in case there's any technical questions about the landscaping design tonight. So we did contract with his firm, and they've been working on this design quite some time. And some of the issues that we've had to deal with in the project are, number one, this median that we're constructing for almost three-quarters of a mile or more along Coast Highway is very narrow, it's only six feet wide, so there's only about five feet available for landscaping. So that's one constraint we have as far as what we have available that we can do with that. Another huge constraint is the fact that we have a major sewer line underneath this median, and staff does not believe it's in the city's best interest to install trees there, which could ultimately damage our very expensive sewer line that we don't want to have to deal with. So with these constraints, I think Art's done a very good job of coming up with some conceptual designs here. Let's see, do I get this thing moving? For the project. And there's several types of landscaping that he's using. Now, this part's on North El Camino Real in the area from Camino Capistrano down past the Shortlift Beach Club, where there are some ocean views. And in the area, the landscaping's a little bit lower to try to help us continue to have our ocean views. So there's more grasses in this area than succulents, or the combinations or percentages are a lot higher. And I also want to mention, and this is very important, and I mentioned this a few months ago, was that the way the street currently functions is the water drains all the way across it from Marblehead Coastal towards the ocean. And if we build a continuous median, that means we either have to build some very expensive storm drains and inlets to pick up the water, or to cut basically holes through the medians in order to let the water pass through the median and through the bike path and pedestrian path onto the railroad rightway, as it has always done in the past. So that is a very important consideration that I've been working closely with my staff on to make sure that we don't end up damming the water that's coming across the street and end up with a bunch of puddles in our roadway. So there, the number of these openings is going to vary quite a bit depending on the steepness of the street. If we can drain the water down the curb and then let it through, but where it's very flat, we're going to have to put more of these openings in. So it is going to be cut up, and I just want to make the council aware of that.
Bill, you know, this is why you did it, but I want to just, you know, encourage and reiterate that that is a huge safety issue, and all you can do, the more the better to me, to get that water drained. It doesn't rain here very often, but sometimes when it does, that could be a, that could be an issue there. So you'll figure it out, and I'm confident in that, but the more the...
Right, I've been dealing with those bluffs for 28 years. And it is, it is a huge issue, because also when it does rain hard, we've got very fine soils here, so they tend to erode, and we get sediment that washes across the road. And there's been talk about trying to make the openings more landscape-friendly, but we need to get that material through there and not cause huge maintenance problems for our staff as well. So those will probably be asphalt or concrete openings to let that water and sediment, if there is any, wash through there, yes.
I just wanted to say, Bill, that whatever you think is appropriate needs to be done here.
All right.
Because you're the go-to guy, and if you say make it asphalt, it's going to be asphalt, so.
All right, well, we're working on it. And this does show one example, but as I say, I think there's going to be more of these openings, but not like one I saw on Oceanside, which was not a pretty sight. So we're trying to keep it as attractive as possible. Now, this is the landscaping concept on the non-ocean segment, which is basically across the Mobile Home Park, the Capistrano Shore's Mobile Home Park, which is a very long, so we'll have some very nice landscaping here, intermixed with some rock that we talked about. So, whoops, went too fast. So here's another view of it, and that K rail that shows in some of these visuals we had is not the way, obviously, the road's going to look. It's just that he, that Art tried to show what the landscaping might be like. There was also some comments at the planning commission about trying to have shrubs and bushes that aren't going to cause bicycle tires to go flat. So Art has mentioned to me tonight that he's coming up with some different plants that will replace some of the ones that he had originally considered there. Another concern that I'll be dealing with him some more on is the maintenance issue, because we're narrowing down the roadway quite a bit. We only have a narrow bike lane, seven-foot bike lane, 11-foot travel lane, and then we have about 17 feet for the bike lane. We need to keep this a low-maintenance facility so that we don't have trucks out there a lot, because we don't have enough room, and I don't want to cause problems for either the cyclists and pedestrians or vehicles traveling along the roadway there. So we're going to work with Art on that as well.
Bill, I'd like to really compliment you on, you know, the concept here, which was that the mix of native plannings combined with crushed rock mulch trail edging provides inspiration for the North El Camino Bicycle Trail from the beach trail.
Correct.
I love the idea that your landscape architect didn't feel the need to reinvent the wheel, but they're kind of taking an identity that is associated with our beach trail and extending it along through the coastal area. I just think that's really great thinking.
Well, it's also helpful that he did a fantastic job as the project manager for the beach trail.
Okay, coincidence? Good.
Possibly.
Yeah.
And as well, other staff members mentioned the need, Jim Holloway and others mentioned the need to try to continue that look along there.
And Bill, one more comment in the interest of continuing. We recently did a bow bout down at the end of Esplanade and Cristobal, and put in a lot of succulents down there. And speaking of low maintenance, that is the definition of low maintenance down there, so that would be a...
Right, well, I think Mr. Guy took the council's suggestions to heart when he did this design, and this is, I think, quite a bit more lush than what you see down at the bow bout, down at T Street. Just to give you an idea, I don't know what the percentage is, but...
What happens if you have a car that breaks down there? Does it occupy a lane? Is there any buffer there? Is it that bike lane on the right or on the left that they could...
The bike lanes will be basically the shoulder, they'll act as an emergency pull-over for vehicles.
And how many feet do they have in those bike lanes, remember?
It's, for the most part, it's seven feet, but once we get up by Camino San Clemente, I think the bike lane, because the street's so narrow, we've got to put a left turn lane in there, I think there's only five to six foot with a 10-foot travel lane. So it's going to be extremely tight there, but the majority of it to the south, I think there's room for a normal width vehicle to park there.
Is there seven feet on either side of the road, then, for that bike lane, or seven foot only on?
The bike lane's on both sides of El Camino.
So it'll give enough room on a shoulder so that people can go around?
Correct, unless you have an extremely wide vehicle. And the other important thing I wanted to mention is our staff has been working, Tom Bonniget, very closely with the Marblehead Coastal developer so that we can coordinate this construction, because they have to widen their side of the street several feet. And we're working with them to put in a parkway so that we can move the sidewalk on the inland side away from the street to encourage more pedestrian activity there. Because I, in my opinion, if I was walking, I'd rather be walking on the bluff side. Gives you better access to the trails up in Marblehead Coastal than walking between vehicles on the street and a railroad track.
Yeah.
So these are all the things that we've been considering in the design. So we've also provided you a schedule, which may be a bit optimistic, because now it appears we may have to obtain a coastal permit, and hopefully we will not have any objections to that. So if things work out, maybe we'll have the permit by April, and then we'll be working with Caltrans, because we are receiving federal funding for this, so we have to jump through all those hoops to get our approval. And we're hoping to have this project under construction in the fall.
Out of curiosity, if we had an LCP in place by now, would this project have been one that the city could have just decided on their own that...
I don't know, I can't answer that.
I can, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
We would have to go to the coastal commission.
No, it would be, it would be within their appeal jurisdiction if somebody wanted to appeal, but the grounds are limited to whether or not it's consistent with the LCP, if it was certified.
So that's basically the report, and we're recommending the council approve these conceptual designs and direct staff to work with Mr. Guy and our other departments to come up with the best design that we can.
Yeah, ask questions, question one.
I got one question, Bill. Some of these plants in the pallet here look like they're pretty sharp.
Right.
Some of these yuccas, are they going to be...
I need to defer to Art on this.
Good, thanks, Art.
My name is Art Guy, Principal with the BGB Design Group.
You know, the ones I'm talking about, Art, over here, the big...
I believe that pallet has actually been shifted a little bit. There was an updated plan, I worked with Randy Little and the rest of the city staff to address some of the concerns that came out of planning commission, dealing with, you know, sharp succulents. And so the final pallet will be succulent, and it might look like it has thorns, but they're really soft, and it's, there won't be any plants that have those types of issues.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No? With that, we'll open the public hearing. We have one card. Ms. Miller? You take the wind out of my sails right now, I'm going to be very upset, so let's hear what you have to say.
Well, you didn't give me proper notice of what wind was in your sails.
Big comments, big comments, so.
All right, I just want to just provide a little bit of correction. My concern about thorns on plants that I expressed at the planning commission, which was shared by a little 10-year-old girl, I don't know, I asked her to email you. Her name is Anshal Daba? Okay, she was here, and she was a rock star when she talked to me afterwards. And she said, yeah, that was a good comment. And my concern was that as little kids or people are walking or biking and weaving around in the Class One as they want to do, they might scrape their ankles on sharp plants. So whether it's bougainvillea or aloe arborescence, aloes do have sharp thorns. I don't care about the tires, that's not the issue, it's mostly scraped ankles. We don't want to have any reason to regret our design for this project. But nevertheless, this is beautiful. I hope we can all have a groundbreaking, OCTA can be represented here, we can all have bicycles, we can all have little doggies, and let's make it a family affair to break ground. And then as the town dreamer, we're going to be able to go from the extended beach trail, wherever that is at its southernmost point, all the way via the beach trail, go through the north beach parking lot, pick up this Class One, go all the way to the Doheny Beach Parking Lot, pick up the San Juan Capistrano, San Juan Creek Class One, and go all the way 10 miles to the north or so, maybe even 11 miles, to the San Juan Los Rios District. Talk about an economic stimulus package for North Beach. These are the kinds of projects that are recognized across the country as being economic stimulus projects, which meets one of our policies in the new mobility element, to use multimodal infrastructure as a tool of economic development. This is it, I can't hardly wait. So let's go forward, I think this is great. So thank you for sharing the dream and being part of this. We are making history here, so thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. No other cards? With that, we'll close the public hearing. With that, we'll, uh, close the public hearing. Uh, I just want to make a couple of comments on this, I'm really disappointed that Tom Frank's not here this evening to, uh, to see this thing get approved. Uh, this is, uh, part of the Ham Master Plan, as I'm officially calling it right now, this is the big dream that I, I have.
You're taking ownership of this thing?
Well, it's part of, part of.
Are you gonna, are you gonna spray-paint your name on all the curves?
I should actually do that, but Tom Frank, I should've called it the Frank Ham Master Plan because, uh, this is one of the things that, uh, Tom took a lot of heat for the, uh, new bike trail we're having on Vaquero through Shortcliffs, and in my mind, this is one of the things, one of the reasons why I wanted that bike trail so, so badly, was because we're gonna have access from Forster Ranch, which is one of the largest communities in our town. Safe bike route access for children, adults, everyone, from Forster Ranch all the way to our downtown, from Forster Ranch all the way to North Beach, all the way to State Park, and all the way up to the harbor in Dana Point, San Juan, just like Brenda mentioned, and it is gonna be a fantastic amenity, and I can't wait for it to open. It's very exciting that I'm seeing dates like fall 2015 on here for start construction.
Which we're holding to.
Yeah, which we're holding to, by the way. I'd love to see it sooner, but just to see those dates is, I'm, I'm excited.
First day of fall 2015, I'm calling you, Bill.
Yeah.
So, you're calling Tom Frank?
I'm calling Tom Frank.
I'll be conference both of you.
Yeah. So, I just want to commend staff on this, uh, please, please, please tell Tom how excited we are for this project. It's, it's gonna change our community forever, for the better, and, uh, people are gonna be using this many, saying, "Why didn't we do this twenty years ago?" Because it's gonna be great. So, thank you very much, staff, and, uh, with that, all move the item.
Second.
Okay, motion by him, second by Baker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero.
Ten grand?
Do you hear that? Did you guys hear that? Bob's gonna kick in ten grand for that.
We should have naming sections where we, we let people put a plaque on certain.
Yeah.
And they.
Brenda Miller plaque.
No? Well, we don't want them to clean it, we don't want them out there. Oral Communications Part Two, I don't have any cards. City manager? City attorney?
No report.
Council members?
Um, I actually have a little bit of a show-and-tell here. Um, on Saturday, January 24th, we're gonna do the Second Annual Walk to the San Clemente Summit, and we're leaving at nine o'clock, and it's the end of Toledo Avenue, and for those of you that have done it or did it with us last year, it's about a three mi- little under three miles round trip, it's a very gentle, but it is a climb, um, dogs on leash are welcome, um, items with wheels are welcome, kids are welcome, we had a gentleman who was eighty-nine years old who did it last time. Um, as an incentive, Laura Ferguson and Veronica Friends have put together these wonderful signature limited edition City of San Clemente, California water bottles, all right? And the mayor wants this one when I'm done, uh, demonstrating it. We'll have about sixty of these to give out to the first sixty folks that, uh, show up. Parking is tricky, so, um, carpooling is encouraged, and, um, these are gonna be empty, so do bring your own water, and, uh, also a hat and sunscreen. So, we'll see you this Saturday at nine AM, and, uh, former Mayor Brown did it last year, it was fun, right?
It was good times.
Did you make it, Tim?
No, I didn't, I had to be, I had to be.
We carried him.
You know, halavacked out of there.
How high is the summit? One thousand and eight feet.
Oh, my God, that's the equivalent of Mount Everest for me, you know, yeah.
But great views and great time of year to be doing it, so this Saturday, nine AM. Okay, thank you.
As a sick practical joke, they're gonna hand out water bottles at the top with no water in it. People panic up there, yeah.
We, we did struggle with that, they're empty.
Uh, I, I do have a comment. This next Tuesday, the 27th, there is a, um, joint meeting, uh, with the CEP, the Community Engagement Panel of San and Ofen Nuclear Generation Station and a Washington DC-based bipartisan policy, uh, policy center, and it's on the, um, the initiative is America's Nuclear Future, Taking Action to Address Nuclear Waste, and it's a way to reinvigorate and expand a discussion on waste, uh, barriers that inhibit progress, and explore options to break through those barriers on a federal level. And so, that's gonna be held this next Tuesday, the 27th, at San Juan Capistrano Community Center, from six to nine thirty PM. All members of the public are welcome to attend, uh, it's encouraged that you do so, and to, uh, to learn a little bit more about this, and also, this is, this is a question which does, um, help to have the community rally behind this because ultimately, um, there have been promises made for a long time to address this waste issue by the federal government, and they have not lived up to those promises, and so this is about holding them to do so, uh, in a proactive policy manner. So, uh, I'm looking forward to it, I think it's gonna be very educational, and, uh, I'd like to invite everyone to come out.
I had the honor of representing the city last Friday at a presentation of the US Congressional Gold Medal presented to the Monfort Point Marines, one of, uh, one of our local citizens, man named Frank Crystal was a Second Lieutenant in the Marine Corps in World War II, and he was associated with the Monfort Point Marines. Uh, Monfort Point was where all the black Marines were trained from nineteen forty-two through nineteen forty-nine, when the armed services were, uh, segregated, and the Monfort Point Marines were integral and part of the integration of the armed services, a very, uh, very terrific story. So, congratulations to, uh, Second Lieutenant Frank Crystal, it was an honor to, to represent the city there, and, uh, he was a terrific guy, and he had a wonderful time at his party, so, thanks for that.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, today, we have the, uh, groundbreaking for Sea Summit at Marblehead Coastal, which is the, uh, new neighborhood located at Marblehead, and, uh, all of councils there with me today, and it was, uh, not quite as good a view as it could've been due to the fog, but, um, we got some very exciting projects coming on board. One of the things that I want to mention about the project is that I've been guaranteed by staff that no later than mid-March of this year, we'll have Avenida Vista Hermosa open to the public through De Pico, which is a very exciting project coming online. And the second thing that will be open will be the trails, which is gonna be a great amenity for the community, and so you'll be able to access those from Estacion, right by the bike rental shop, and, uh, it's over four miles of trails, coastal trails, and I think almost all of it has an ocean view. There might be one little sliver that's in a corner, and it's, it's breathtaking, if you haven't been up there.
You've been to Point?